We'll call the meeting order with Pledge of Religions.
The Pledge of Religions. To flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kurt Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Murphy.
I am here.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Lannon.
Here.
Trustee Theryn.
Here.
Trustee Lay is excused, and Clark Cody is here.
President, except for Miranda, who's excused, Trustee Lay, sorry. We have an agenda in front of us, happy to entertain motions.
I move or approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Brown, to approve the agenda as presented, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. I wish we had a presentation tonight, our, my favorite presentatier, Commissioner Engler, not here tonight. No public hearings, so we'll go to item seven on the agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you do choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we will open up public comment at 7:01 PM. Let's record show nobody here in person, and no one here remotely. So we'll give it a three or four minutes to let somebody come through the front door, It's been three or four. We'll give them opportunity later, if they come late. So seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at 7:02 PM. No proposed closed session, correct, everyone? No one's proposing that?
No.
That takes us to report, boards and comments, current list of boards and commissions, appointments as needed. I have to admit, I didn't actually look at it this time, partly because we've filled some seats I've been concerned about, but I know we have the one on the EDA still to fill, and ZBA can always use another alternate. Anything else on that? June monthly activity report, we'll get that later.
Yes.
Planning Commission, EDA and ZBA updates by our Community and Economic Development Director, Director Nanny, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Couple of items, for our Economic Development Committee Board, they did a meeting on the seventeenth, they had one business item on the agenda, and that was to consider a bid for refurbishment of our East DDA District Park benches and trash receptacles. Noted last year or so that we've had a lot of deterioration on those units, we have several where we have broken slats on the benches, we have number of trash receptacles that the slides are either faded, or some are broken, and so it's decided to put a request out for bids to have a firm or firms to look at refurbishing those, refreshing those. We received one bid for that, and that was from Bill's Custom Fabrication here in town, and so the EDA did take a look at that, the company represents right here, and ultimately the EDA Board did decide to accept their bid, and that project will be moving forward. We have, I was just meeting with the company this morning to take a look at the samples that they had, make sure that they were happy with color, the new slats, all the slats are composite material, and so it's what verified the colors and such, and those materials will be placed on order very shortly. They actually, the company's been great to work with, they actually, very thorough, proactive, they identified an extra safety element that we had not noted in our request for bids, and had a plan for it as part of their proposal. That was, with the group, the benches, the anchor points are still going to be sticking out of the concrete, and so they devised a fix for that, so that those will be safe along the benches our way, be refurbished. And in fact, this morning, as I was meeting with them, they came to me with another item to enhance the project, which was to add an additional clear coat anti-graffiti layer on top of the new paint for all those areas that are painted, and they proposed to do that without changing the bid price. So it's just something extra that they felt was important for the project, so this has been a great start. You will not see activity till probably near the end of the summer, the lead time for material ordering is about eight weeks, they said, so once they have materials, they will start the process, and they have a four-phase process to remove and replace the benches, so there will always be some benches on each side of the road while they're doing the work. So that was a made item for the EDA Board. A side note, just to make you aware of, we just, we just had a streetlight that damaged in an accident replaced just a month or so, we were about to lose one temporarily, it's not an accident, but the streetlight near the Hampton Inn is going to be taken down next week to facilitate a sewer lead project, constructing a sewer lead to a building behind the Hampton Inn. So we'll just be here for a few days, and then we'll come back, the company's doing the work, paid for that, and so you'll see that go, and then it'll come back, probably right around 3rd of July. The other item was the Planning Commission, they also met on the seventeenth, they had three business items, two were site plan related, one was approval of the final site plan for the Thrive Community Church, this is the new church building's going, being constructed on Bud Street, north side of Bud Street, right to there by South Isabella Road. They did receive their final site plan approval, there's some housekeeping things to take care of. The other item was preliminary site plan approval was granted for the new Michigan College Events Center, that's proposed on the campus of Michigan College. So they have some steps they're taking before they can go back and, or final site plan approval, they get the preliminary approval. And then the last item was, the City of Mount Pleasant notified the township of, or invited the township to comment on their draft master plan update. You may recall, seeing the paper, that they could work in primarily on a read, another look at the Mission Street Corps, and that became a master plan update, included some other elements beyond transportation, but they have a draft master plan, it's available on their, on the City of Mount Pleasant website, and as part of the adoption process, the State Planning Act requires the city to notify all the surrounding jurisdictions, county, and some utility companies, and some other entities, and give them 63 days to review the plan and make any comments. So Planning Commission did take a look at the plan in May, and they ultimately did take an action to adopt a resolution making some recommendations back to the city at their meeting in June. So those were the items that they had on the agenda, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Are they planning to move forward with making a median in the whole way of Mission?
Well, I think there's, there's some projects they have to improve in Mission Street, I frankly don't know all the details of the timing, or which projects they need to move forward first. The main item that we were looking at from township perspective was a proposed roundabout at the Bluegrass River intersection at Mission Street, but I do know that they have plans to do traffic calming, and try to improve safety all over that road.
So roundabout at Bluegrass and Mission, that would be MDOT though, right? That's not city at all.
Well, yeah, MDOT was involved, actually, a fair chunk of Mission Street, of course, is part of the M20 corridor, and what is not M20 is the US-127 business loop, so MDOT is definitely involved in the whole stretch of the road.
Okay, thanks. I'll admit now that I was not at the EDA meeting last week, because I was traveling for business, but, so I'm going to ask you a question, if it's inappropriate in this forum, that's fine, I'll ask you privately later, but did we discuss the sprinkler system at all, where the status of that is?
We did not.
Okay. Are we expecting something in the near future?
Right now, we're working with MDOT on a permit, they've, MDOT has asked that we secure a new permit for the extension of that, so that's the next step, essentially, so we can get that done.
Okay, that's good enough, that's helpful, thanks. Sorry I wasn't at the meeting.
Rodney, would you mind just briefly touching on the four, I think four or so, comments that were made on the city master plan, please?
So the Planning Commission has reviewed the plans, the focus was on the transportation plan element, because that was the main section that affected the township, and in their resolution, they did respond back essentially in four areas. One was related to the Bluegrass and Mission Street intersection improvements, which is essentially, in the master plan, draft plan, they're proposing a roundabout there to address safety issues. The Planning Commission noted that the roundabout design there was inconsistent with township planning priorities, primarily related to pedestrian use there. Roundabouts are problematic for pedestrians, because these are not signalized, and especially for folks with disabilities, they can be terrible. Although that's a very busy road, and a very wide road there, we have a remarkable number of folks that walk and bike ride across that space. So they, the Planning Commission recommended something, essentially looking at moving that roundabout south to the, to the point where the business loop meets the old Mission Road, and they're putting a roundabout there, and then essentially redesigning the section, the short section road, to narrow it up as it comes into, into Bluegrass. There are other possibilities, there's a number of possible ways to accomplish safety improvements at that intersection, besides either roundabout designs, and MDOT has kind of a menu of possibilities, but right now, the city planning only has the roundabout. We'd love to see more of a menu approach to it, and see where that goes. The second item was related to the south interchange, UGUS-127 interchange, their previous plan had talked about a desire for a new interchange at Brewfield Road and 127. This update moved that focus to improving the south, existing south interchange at the business loop, this exit 139. That right now is basically a half interchange, you can only get off the road, go northbound, and they can only get on the road going southbound. So the idea is to update that interchange to a full interchange for north and southbound traffic, and the comment from the Planning Commission was first of all supportive of that, but also to ask that the City Planning Commission consider including in their plan, extending that business loop across that interchange and over to Summerton Road, and have a connect, have an end at Summerton Road. And the reason for that is largely to create a more integrated road system in that part of the city and township area, part of the county, it would, were fully connected together, these areas of the community, and actually would provide better access to the business districts, both in the city and the township of Bluegrass and Mission. That was their comment for that item. The third item, in their plan, and this was in a previous plan as well, it was a proposal to reroute M20 off of, off of Redness Road. The proposal was to reroute M20 to come, continue west on Pickard Road, right up to Lincoln Road here, and then go south on Lincoln down to Redness, and pick up from there to head west. The plan does not really describe the reasons for that, but certainly right now, the existing M20 goes through the neighborhoods, of course, there by University and Washington Mission, Main Street, all that, so that may be part of the concern. Planning Commission simply noted that that design is not consistent with our planning priorities, township planning priorities, and it's also not consistently with the practical elements of the state highway, because of the surface, primarily because of the surface rail road crossing, trying to do a great separation there on Pickard Street would be very, very challenging, because of how close that point is to the river. And it would also, either whether you go up or down with that great separation, it would severely impact the businesses around it. So that was noted by the Planning Commission. It would also have the effect potentially of pulling not just traffic away from Mission Street, but also potentially pulling businesses away from Mission Street, and essentially just moving the business to be out of, off of Mission and out here to Lincoln, the areas that are not really currently intended for that. So for those reasons, Planning Commission recommended that the City Planning Commission reconsider that idea.
Can I ask a question on this issue?
Sure.
Were you done with that part?
Yep.
So if that happens, MDOT's gonna end up having to foot the bill to upgrade the road here, right, Lincoln?
My assumption is, is that, yes, there could be upgrades, because the road's not set up for a truck route.
They have always given pushback on this idea in the past, I mean, this was proposed a long time ago, and they always said no.
It is really the last.
I'm surprised, I guess.
It's really the last remnant of the old reroute idea.
Right.
So.
Right. But yeah, MDOT was like, no, we've upgraded that, those roads, they're truck-ready, we don't want to do it here, and pay for it again, essentially.
So that was recommended to be removed from the plan, and look at other options. The last item was the Broadway Street Extension, coming west from Radley to Lincoln. Previous, the previous city master plan had that on their plan, it was an important element to make that connection. The current plan didn't have it, it simply was missing from the document. There's an interesting quirk here in the State Planning Act, in that this is kind of a leftover from the old city municipal financing, it's called. City master plans have the ability to include what's called an official streets map, and that official streets map can show planned streets, people would like to extend the street this way, would like to widen that street that way, and the State Planning Act gives extra weight to those city official street maps in the city master plan. Calls out, and essentially says that although there's not right away officially reserved, any development might take place, please respect that official streets map. Interestingly enough, as I said, that's a city provision, it's not quite the same for the township, although we certainly can show future streets, they don't have necessarily the same official element to it. So having that piece in the city master plan is added benefit, both to the city and the township, as we work to try to get that extension completed. So Planning Commission noted that omission, and asked for it to be added back in.
Can you see a benefit to the city to not have that in there? I mean, because they're essentially losing their right to do anything with it in the future, potentially, right?
My assumption is that it was simply omission.
Just, just, wasn't a priority, and it got lost, and, that makes sense.
Any other questions, or?
Kudos to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, one clarification, on that first piece of information that you talked about at the roundabout, and you mentioned Bluegrass, and I thought I heard you say, maybe a reconfiguration, which could maybe narrow that road? Is that what you said, maybe like changing from four lanes to some other configuration?
One of the concerns that the, I understand the city expressed during the planning process was the speed of traffic coming into that intersection.
Yep.
From the south, because of course, that stretch of the business loop coming from 127 up to Bluegrass, is, it's a high-speed road, I mean, it is designed for 55 miles an hour, you could go more, but it's designed for a high speed, and it's designed for that high speed right up to Bluegrass Road. And so one of the reasons why the roundabout was apparently proposed was to create a need to slow down, and to change that character, to say, this is now a different place. But there's no reason the roundabout needs to do that, which simply adjusting the road design can also have that same benefit, and it can be narrowing a lane up a little bit, it can be changing the number of lanes, there are a number of ways to create the design cues that tell the drivers, this is different, I need to slow down.
And I've seen that work effectively in one city, Carmel, Indiana, Carmel, Indiana, and Nobleville, Indiana, over in that area, they've shrunken and created actually better traffic flow at slower speeds. But a potential benefit, if I understood you, if there could be maybe a narrowing of lanes on Bluegrass, that might open, that could open up right away for sidewalk usage.
It could be, I will tell you, with regards to narrowing lanes, the challenge we have is on the MDOT road, that is a truck route, and so MDOT has damage-related trucks and lane woods, and we had that conversation when they were planning the work on M20, Pickard Road, and so we said the same thing, can we, while you were tearing all this apart, can we make an adjustment, slow down traffic, narrow the lanes, and the answer to that was that because of the truck traffic, they need to be a certain length. Obviously, all this is, these are design elements, and there are ways, even if you can't narrow the lane with that, that you can create design cues that help folks understand they need to slow down.
Thanks.
We had, you probably had mentioned it, I'm sorry if I'm repeating, but if there was, if the roundabout was the thing of choice, you could actually make another entrance into the plaza, and even exit.
Oh, for the, if they do the roundabout.
If you go back to the south of the road, Mission is, put a roundabout there, people coming off the expressway have to slow down, but then, if you're going, let's just say, south, you could hit the roundabout, come around and go into the plaza, or if you were in the plaza, you could come out, rather than coming off of Bluegrass.
One of the challenges, we're talking about Indian Hills Shopping Center, and one of the challenges at Bluegrass Road is left-hand turns, and it's not just at Bluegrass intersection itself, but it's also left-hand turns out of the Indian Hills Shopping Center, heading over to Mission Street. That is a big conflict area, and right now, it is very challenging to get out of that shopping center from, certainly the western two exits. So one of the ideas about moving that roundabout to Old Mission, is it could include a leg that would be a new entrance into Indian Hills, that would reduce the need for folks to make left-hand turns, moving that section.
They should have went, maybe in my mind, a little farther with the turn lane past Sweeney, because if you go right, and then you want to turn left on Sweeney, you're out of the turn lane by that point, so now you're stopping the lane of traffic if you're turning left. And they were so close to having that turn lane go to Sweeney.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rodney.
That takes us to item 9D on the agenda, Board Member Reports, Trustee Theryn?
I am good, thank you.
Clark Cody, Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I had a regular meeting for the City of Mount Pleasant Commission Monday, June 23rd, 7:00 PM. I'll just go over new business real quick here, they considered, or they had, they approved a contract extension with the Menick Smith Group, I hope I pronounced that right, for not to exceed $41,525 to perform environmental consulting services, including the development of conceptual site model, and focused feasibility study at the former Mount Pleasant City landfill, and they did, they did pass that. Also awarded a contract for the water treatment plant improvements to RCL, construction for 12 million and some change, and that was also approved and awarded. But a couple, the last few, bit, this is, kind of filled the meeting with residents from the City of Mount Pleasant, they considered a, and they actually passed a renewal of the Central Business District Tax and Sentiment Financing Authority, TIFA, I believe is how the manager pronounced, is, pronounced it, but they did pass a 75% tax capture for 10 years on that. That was an important item on their new business. The second one, I thought was also very important, the City of Mount Pleasant will be, if the Lake Isabella Board passes, we're moving into a contract for police service agreement with the Village of Lake Isabella, at $250 an hour, and they are moving towards that agreement if it, if it all passes. Those were the new business items that passed for the City of Mount Pleasant. Check it out online, if you go on, you can YouTube it, it was a good meeting, excellent meeting, a lot of, they filled it, and there was a lot of public comment on several different consent items and new business items. It was an excellent meeting.
On the tax capture, I saw it was in the paper, but I didn't have a chance to read it yet. They were just renewing the 75. My assumption was that 75% capture was what it was before. Do you happen to know? Did they say?
I'm not sure, but it's been, I believe, many years since they've captured.
Yeah, I think it was kind of dormant for a while and they just.
Since 2019, I believe. If I'm speaking right, I want to watch myself here.
That seems accurate from what I know.
And I'm not sure if it was 75%. I can't speak of that, but that's what it is now for the next 10 years.
Thank you. Trustee Lannan?
I haven't attended any meeting since last board meeting.
Treasurer Rogers?
I'm good.
I think I'm good. I already stated that I missed the EDA meeting for business reasons, but, so we'll move on to consent agenda. May I ask, well, I saw you had warrants, Trustee Thering?
They're all good. Thank you.
Happy to entertain any motions regarding that?
Motion to approve. Support?
Motion by Cody, support by Rogers. Discussion. I just want to comment, this isn't the first pack that this is true, but the fire department has either changed their software or something in their presentation to the data we get. Not saying good or bad, I'm just saying I noticed the difference. Anything else? All in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business. Our first item, A, is a review of Governance Policy 3.10. And just as a reminder, at our last board meeting, we had some discussion on it. And then it was given to the management team to come back and propose a draft of changes. With the goal primarily of clarifying language, making sure that it's clear to the board what the policy is. As well as to the organization, because they have to implement a portion of it. So. With that, you do have. Two copies at your desk. One is the original document with line or markup. In it, which shows stuff that we proposed to remove or add or modify. And then the second document is if we were to approve all of these changes as-is. What it would look like is the clean document. Primarily, I wanted to have that for you so, because it's easier to read this and see what it actually would be if we did all these things. But it's also important to see the changes we recommended. So the way we did this, just for background, we got a, I made a Word document of 3.10. And we pass it around, collected our marked up edits. And then the management team met yesterday afternoon, kind of reviewed those, made a few additional changes, and that's what you have before you. Would you two like to say anything or manager? Anything on this?
No.
Okay, so with that, is it helpful if I kind of go through those changes? Or do you just want to comment on what's in front of you? Okay, go through it a little bit? Okay, so we don't have page numbers here, but there's the four pages, right? So on the first page. I'm just reading here. We got rid of 3.10.2.1. Oh, I was trying to remember why we did this. This came as a result of both our manager and myself pointed this out. It doesn't seem to fit here. What does fit here? Oh, we got, there's the marks.
You can use this.
Okay, thanks. We had comments in here that didn't get printed on this one.
Which one are you talking about, Brian?
3.10.2.1, we suggested removing this. Couple of things. Certainly, this is, this part of the policy is related to attendance for conferences and workshops. But not so much from some of the other stuff that's here, you know, surveys, focus groups, other input mechanisms. Didn't make a lot of sense. Those things are addressed in other policies. And it was my feeling at least that it's pretty clear and implied that all of our budgeting is focused around the ends to begin with anyways. And so it was kind of redundant and not a useful paragraph. You want to comment on why you felt it was not useful here?
Well, with any policy, I think it's important that the wording focus on the intent of the specific policy in question. In this case, it's the cost of governance, more specifically 3.10.3, which really gets into meeting pay. What kind of meetings are going to be payable or attendance? So language that isn't on point can tend to distract and confuse when somebody is trying to read and interpret and follow the policy.
Thank you. So thoughts on that?
Can't agree that.
Yeah, I agree.
Let me ask this then. Any objections to this recommendation? Okay. So what I'll try to do is go through this and if we need to make changes, I'll take notes, bring that back. If we approve everything, then we'll prove it as-is and. I don't think the edits are very hard. 3.10.2.2 talked about the $50, $75, what was called meeting pay. Ultimately, that was moved. Into the 3.10.3, because it seemed to belong there better. It shows it deleted there, but if you look on the top of the second page, it's the very first paragraph. Makes sense? So that was just an organizational move. Any objections there?
No.
Nope.
And then at the bottom of the first page, you'll see, I uppercase the word township.
It's a proper noun.
I thought so. It's the township, not just a township. Any objections there? And I did that consistently throughout the document where I caught it, where township was lowercase. Because it's the title of our organization. So then we get into. 3.10.3.1, which is the one moved from above. And it's not shown here, but it is shown on the first page. I did make some changes to it. Some of the confusion that came out of the previous policy was the word meeting pay. Because the way the policy was intended is to compensate for additional meetings outside your normal board duties. Such as going to road commission, for example. But we also had it in there to encourage training, right? Conferences, those kinds of things. And so the meeting didn't encapsulate all of that. So I decided to try the word attendance pay instead. Attendance for liaison meetings or attendance to workshops and training, those kinds of things. So I tried to change that throughout the documents too, as well. Any objections or a better, thought of a better word?
That makes sense.
And a few places in there, instead of the word meeting, I put the word event, again, trying to be more broad with that. That it could be a meeting or a training, right? Council of Governments, who knows what? I think that's the runt of the changes I made in that paragraph. Again, just clarification was the idea there. Moving on, there's some reordering here. So this is the new proposed 3.10.3.2, which is a second full paragraph on the second page. It's in green. This is, I believe, the same language that was in the original policy. It's just been moved. In the order in the document, so it's near the top here. I don't think there was any word changes. Any objections? It's just an order thing?
Nope.
Okay. And then the following paragraph. Two changes. One, this is 3.10.3.3, capitalizing township. Here, I actually use the word meetings or events. And then rather than decide which meetings are important, decide which ones are in the township's interests. And this was actually a good suggestion by our clerk. Correct me if I get this wrong. Our clerk felt that saying, these are important, are these other ones important? It was maybe diminishing the importance of some of these events or meetings. Hence the change from important to just is in the township's interest to have representation there. Good?
Yes.
Next change is just, you'll see some of the numbering is just different because of things being taken out and moved. But the bottom paragraph had a couple of changes. This is 3.10.3.5. Isabella County Chapter of the MTA rather than just MTA ad hoc meetings. It's a more official title, so we're clear as to what that is. 2% roundtable discussion. Was that in there before? I'm trying to remember. Or is that, that's an addition, right?
That's an addition.
And I believe, and other ad hoc events determined by majority of the board. I think I put that in to replace and the two road commission ad hoc meetings, just to kind of, again, trying to make it more broad. Any ad hoc events that the majority of the board thinks it's important to have representation at, we can make it so, right? Kind of the intent of that. One of the issues that was tried to address in this as well is the very end of that sentence. Confusion, if you go to MTA conference, it's four days long, is that one attendance pay or is that four? Or is that some other number? And so this was attempting to clarify that. So multi, we can change this, but this is what I put, multi-day events such as MTA conference shall be compensated for each day. So in that case, assuming that each day is longer than one hour, then it would be $75 for each day. Clear? Any objections? Okay. Page three then. Number four, what used to be number four was removed. And this basically says, a supervisor, clerk and treasurer shall not get any what was called meeting pay or attendance pay. Between the business hours of the township. And that goes back to a day when supervisor was making around $35,000. Was expected to be here more engaged on a daily basis. At this point, when this was written. The very first new manager of the township was here. And so at that time, the treasurer, clerk and supervisor tended to be around all the time. And we've become where we no longer are like that, right? The treasurer comes in and takes care of her statutory duties, same with the clerk with elections and bookkeeping, all that stuff. Not bookkeeping finance, but. And then as supervisor, I just, there isn't a need for me to be here to get in Mark's way unless something comes up that we need a supervisor for. So the feeling was that like board review or road commission is a good example, because that's during the day that, and I'm going to, can I use you as the example? So our treasurer is appointed as liaison to the road commission. That is, I consider above and beyond the treasurer's duty and not part of our compensation package. And therefore is eligible to receive compensation. That does not mean that things that we do in our roles as clerk, treasurer or supervisor should be compensated. Because we have a policy that says only these things get compensated separately. Does that follow me? Because like our management team meeting, this came up in the meeting last night, well, we should get paid from management team meetings, but that's really part of our job, right? That's part of our base job. So this is quite a change, is what I'm getting at?
Good clarification. It's good clarification.
Do you have words to add to this? Thoughts? Any objections? Makes sense though? Okay.
Absolutely.
The next one, the paragraph, the only change was meeting pay to attendance pay. The following paragraph, 10.10, or 3.10.3.7. You can see the scratched out part. It talked about travel expenses shall be paid for meetings approved by meeting pay, blah, blah, blah. And I changed this to take it out of the meeting, out of this policy a little bit, just to say, if you're doing travel for the township. On behalf of the township, customary travel expenses should be reimbursed like any other employee. And that should fall under how the organization deals with that. And I didn't sense pushback from you on that, correct?
Correct.
This, this does place a burden on the organization a little bit to have to make the call. So if I were to go to a conference and they're providing lunch, right, as part of the conference. But I decide to go out to the local steakhouse and get a lobster and a prime rib, you know, abusing it, right? The organization may come back and go, uh, no, that's, you gotta be more responsible than that. Reasonable statement? So any objections, thoughts on that? I do an okay getting through this for you? Number seven, I think, just got moved to the very bottom. That what used to be seven, a board member wishing to attend a meeting that does not qualify, blah, 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 right? That just got moved to the very bottom. The next paragraph, no changes other than the number. What used to be number nine. We moved that, right? Where did we move that to? Up to the previous page. So it's not being deleted. It was just moved up in the document. Okay? Anything not clear?
Which one's that, Brian?
What used to be number nine is the green on your third page. It's just saying, any meeting of the board is, you're already being compensated other ways. It's your job, right? This is new, this next paragraph, 3.10.3.9. And this is one of those things that began this whole process about clarity. So can I use you as an example? So trustee Thering is our liaison to the planning commission. All planning commissioners get paid whatever it is. I don't even know how much it is. A lot of money. I would like to be appointed to the planning commission. But they all get compensated and that triggers automatically, you don't see trustee Thering submitting attendance pay or meeting pay requests for planning commission. Same with board review, per policy back in 2019, I think. Was the supervisor should get paid the same as the other board of review members. And so what I'm trying to do is here is say, anything that you're appointed as a liaison or representative to, if you're already being compensated for it. Then taxpayers shouldn't have to compensate you in addition to that.
Is that an automatic compensation or your attendance is required?
Your attendance is required. So I'm assuming if trustee Thering doesn't go to the planning commission one time, you're out 80 million dollars then.
Right. That's, that's how I, I've always taken it. If I did not make it to a meeting, I did not receive meeting pay, which I should not.
I'm guessing, and you can help me here if I'm wrong, I'm guessing the staff actually looks at the roll call and that's who they decide to compensate. I would see no other way of doing it.
That or the staff representative for that board is interfacing, communicating with finance.
Finance, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
This is a little bit off to the side, and I think I've asked this before, and I just don't remember the answer. If I know I can't make it to a planning commission meeting, don't, don't try to fill the spot?
Because they wouldn't have any voting rights because they're not duly appointed.
Okay.
So there are, there are situations that, not that ZBA is one that we appoint to, but. Board of Review, that one's a little different too, because statutorily, the supervisor is the secretary and has to, supposed to be there. Board of Review, that one's a little different too because statutorily, the supervisor is the secretary and has to, supposed to be there. But yeah, no.
Required training for that.
Right. So if
That's right, I just couldn't remember.
She, she couldn't really be a voting member because she's not sworn into the planning commission.
Or board of trustees, you have to have certain training to, I believe,
Right.
be a part of that. I thought that was kind of a requirement.
Trustee Landon?
So instead of holding off till the end with this one, I'll bring it up now. Where it says whether it be in person or virtually. That uh
Can you remind me where that's at?
Give that a little rub.
Yeah, I, I remember the uh
That's on uh
The language.
Three point ten point three point three
Cause uh
One crossed off.
Were actually only virtual like this.
Intergovernmental for the longest time.
It just changed though, didn't it?
It was only virtual.
So some of them are, I don't know if there's any more.
We, we just had our first intergovernmental meeting right here. Our first one, in person. Uh, so trustee Landon, what, uh, what's the?
So my question was, um, so we specify you can be in person or virtual.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But then the next line, in the event the original assigned member is unable to attend, they should attempt to fill the position position by asking another board member to attend the meeting. So
Yeah.
That virtual to me throws in a monkey wrench.
I, I think the intent, I'm guessing here, and this came out of COVID, I think, uh, I think the intent was if it's only virtual, like intergovernmental, that's, that's the only way you can attend.
Sure, and I can fully
Yeah.
accept that and understand that.
Probably should say that though, right? Somehow is the suggestion?
In person or virtual if that's the only option or, you know, come, come say that down a little bit.
What if, um,
Are there any meetings that are virtual only?
I don't think so, not anymore.
Or virtual at all?
I think it was just because of COVID.
Yeah, intergovernmental was the one that I know of that always was.
We can just take it out.
We take, we take it out and ultimately part of, I think, the goal of some of this policy is to take any of the decision-making out of the organization and put it all on us. It is our job to police ourselves on this. Right?
Yep.
And so I think as we review the packets, we look at this stuff, we need to say, yeah, that's not okay, that's
Looking at it further, if somebody might say there's only options to attend these meetings because they're only offered online. For instance, I know MTA has a whole bunch of online meetings you can attend.
You're right. I've done those before, right?
We don't get paid for those.
Yeah. Ma'am? Yes.
The virtual part was added due to COVID. And as time has gone by slowly, but I think rather surely, the Open Meetings Act is being adjusted to become more accommodating for virtual meetings. And they've already added a couple of things, mostly in the military area, but they're, I think they expanded one for documented health reason, those kind of things. So you might be able to imagine that uh you could have a virtual only city council meeting.
Sure.
Well, in that case, if you want, you know, you can only watch it virtually. Right now, you have a in-person city council meeting and you can sit at home, watch it virtually.
Right.
And I think what you're getting at, maybe I'm wrong, is will you get meeting pay if you attend that meeting virtually from your home?
Looking for clarification on that. That would be one point of light that you'd refer to all this as.
And so I would suggest, and maybe it's wording, maybe it's not necessary, but it's, I don't believe it's the intent of the board to just keep an eye on these other boards. But you also want some physical presence. Because that's important to maybe more important. And so if they're in both locations, available to both, I would think that you would almost want to or get paid if you attend in person. We're not talking about training sessions, events, that's already covered. This is the road commission, uh, county board, city commission primarily, I think.
So I, I guess I was kind of trying to get at and not even worrying about pay on it at this point, but if I can't attend a meeting I'm assigned to, but no, I can watch it virtually because it's available virtually. In my mind, I was thinking, since I can't attend in person, I should be asking somebody. Is, is just my thought, and so I was looking at clarification.
Yeah, I guess my personal feelings are you ought to find someone that you might watch.
Representation of this board at the meeting
At the meeting.
is really what's key important.
So are we looking for, you do not get paid if you watched it the next day?
That's a legitimate question.
Yeah, it is a legitimate question. I think that's out of the spirit of
Right, I mean, I think we all understand what, what you're putting down there, we're just, we want to be more clear.
Can you just take it away?
So just take the
That's what I think too, we just take it away.
Stop it, stop it at ten. Cross it out, stop at a ten, yeah.
Some trainings, the best option for you is to do it remotely.
Might be the only option.
Might be the only option.
So I mean, can you just take out whether it be put in person?
Stop it at ten.
What's that?
Stop at a ten.
Yeah, I think so too.
If it is only a virtual option, we can explain that to the board. Just how that's laid in there. And we just create a lot of questions.
Where was that again?
Three point ten point three point three.
Three point.
Under the green.
Under the green.
This next one down here.
Oh, I was on the wrong page, yeah, appreciate it. So a, a ten period
Right here, just
Scratch. Now, I think the discussion is helpful for us too to understand what we
Stop, oh, I see, I see, I got you, I got you.
What's the desire of the policy is.
Yeah, cause the intended, yeah, if you stop at a ten, the intent is to
Attend.
Be at that meeting that day, so.
I just noticed in that same section, the bullet points, there's an extra bullet, it shouldn't. That last sentence is two
Oh, it's not a bullet?
I'll get rid of the bullet. Yeah, so back to your point, trustee Landon, if I may, it says, in the event the original assigned member is unable to attend, they should attempt to fill the position with another board member. So now the way I interpret that with the virtual being gone is even if you can attend virtually, if you can't be in person, see if someone can be there in person. Because it's kind of important that we have uh representation at these meetings. And it's not just for collecting information either, right? It's building relationships. We all good?
So we're talking in per, in person?
The, I think trustee Landon was saying if I can't attend a meeting in person, but I can attend it virtually, do I still get someone to go in my stead or is just watching it virtually good enough?
Right. I would say I can't make it, but I can watch it. I need to get somebody attend. If I can, that person would be paid for going. Me watching virtually is just me watching virtually. And I would expect the person that attended to do the report at the board meeting to inform us what went on at the meeting.
Perfect.
I'm all good? We good? Do we deal with your issue then?
Yeah, by removing virtually, I think it takes a, it's just a word that brings up a lot of questions.
Yeah.
As we just saw.
No, it's all good. Let's see.
So we were there, so I threw that out.
No, I'm glad you did.
Keep going on.
We're at the bottom of the third page, which is where we begin to list what liaison roles there shall be or may be. So here I changed the wording meetings to meetings slash events to be more inclusive again. Uh, I scratched, you know, union township, when I say I, I mean yes, I deleted the document, but we did it together collectively. Got rid of the sustainability committee because it no longer is standing. I moved, uh, Isabella County, regular meetings of the whole, I'm not sure if there's a better way to describe that, and city of Mount Pleasant Board of Commissioners. And road commission, all three of those, I think, were taken from below. And brought into the shall, so we're looking at the shall appoint liaisons versus the next section, which is may appoint liaisons. You follow what I just, the distinction? And so I felt
Right now, where are you at, Brian?
I'm at the bottom, the last section of the third page and it runs over into the second page. So it says, the following is list of meetings slash events the board shall assign representatives to. This is, so it's not an option. We have to do appointments to that. And I felt those three, at least in our current practice, those three meaning county, city and road commission should be in that shall category.
Took him out of the may and put him in the shall.
Okay.
Any objections to those three?
No.
No. I can bring it up later or now, since we're here. For instance, you might just change the verbiage on Isabella County regular meeting of the whole.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how that should be stated. I figured you could help.
I would at least put commissioner, Isabella County commissioners.
Oh, yeah.
Regular meeting of the whole.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, right above that, Isabella County, um, I scratched um some of the description about the board of review thing. Because I felt the addition to the policy earlier that we discussed, kind of covers that and we don't need that obfuscated here. So as a result of that, then when you get to the may, which is the next section, following this list of meetings the board may assign.
Brian, question for you, board of review, since you're required statutorily to be secretary, that means you would be the only board representative
Correct. In fact, I think, and our manager can correct me, but I believe it's illegal for anybody else.
I think we went over that a meeting ago.
Yeah, I think it's supervisor and that's it.
Yep.
And I, and I don't have voting rights, I just have to be there and I take notes and I don't get to debate things.
What, what if you're not able to attend? If you're the secretary, someone else is delegated?
That, that happened, um
Just like we do in here.
Yep.
Yeah, so uh, last one, I was not able to attend the last two hours of uh the Friday meeting. And so on that Thursday, knowing I was, I was leaving town, they took a vote and elected from within their board who should be the secretary for that Friday meeting. Let's see. I thought I tried to temporary committees.
And I don't know if you want to throw in Isabella County Road Commission, I mean
Oh, just as road commission, doesn't it? Yeah, I think that would be better. I, okay. Thank you, trustee. I think I just moved that one. I didn't even look at the language that much. And, and the one that was always a little weird to me is the last one in the may assign section, which says others to be added from time to time per approval of the board. And that's really up to us if there's something we deem as necessary to have representation, right? We appoint someone. Gives us an out flexibility. And then that last paragraph, just as a reminder, is just moved from above. We already discussed the few changes that were in that, which is primarily wording. Renaming meeting pay to attendance pay. So currently I have fixing a bullet, taking out whether it be in person or virtually. Right? Adding commission to the Isabella County Commission regular meetings. Uh, adding Isabella County to Isabelle County Road Commission in the shall assign. And that's the only changes I got so far from this board.
You say remove the bullet?
And remove the bullet, I, I thought I did.
Oh.
It's on, it's in my notes at least. Anything else on this? You feel it's better?
Yeah, nice work.
Can I motion to approve it with the additional changes?
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Brown to approve the policy three point ten, cost of governance, with the few changes that I just listed. Anybody not clear in the motion? Any other discussion? Trustee Landon?
Yes. More discussion.
Okay.
But um, we can approve the motion if you want to be more additional.
It's not gonna change.
It, it probably, it could.
Oh, I proved that there was a motion and we had the second. Floor is yours.
Okay, just um looking at three point ten point three point five. And I don't think I said it at the time you went through it, because I was gonna kind of wait till the end. I believe it's not council of governance, I believe it's council of governments.
I think it is governance.
Yeah, I thought it was governance too.
I think it's governance.
Am I allowed to get on my laptop real quick?
It, it's the council of governments of the county townships. And I, you might wanna I believe it's governments and not governance.
Looking at your email.
That's Isabella County Council of Government, singular. And it's actually Isabella County Council of. So you're requesting that we change that to the proper name, correct?
We might as well make it proper.
And where was that? That was in
Three ten
Oh, yeah. Dot three, dot five. Where do we have that? I still don't see it.
Three point ten point five, three, yeah, there you go.
Oh, it's, I was going over it, I saw the county chapter of the MTA, okay, so uh, Isabella County Council of Government. Okay. Thank you. Something else? Trustee Landon? Any objections to that change?
No.
No. Still motion to approve with the minor changes. And any other clerical changes you may see needed.
How much you got?
Go ahead.
Just some thought. It was kind of uh alluded to, I think, when this was introduced initially. And so if someone wants to go to a meeting, but um it's not approved, say it's uh their ninth meeting. It wasn't clear, I don't think, we said, no, you won't get paid for going. But then in the same breath, if I recall, it said but the township can still pay for the fee to go to the meeting. But you won't be paid for attending. So I just wanted to be clear, clear that if you're not um off the If you're not authorized, you know, as an approved, you can go to the meeting, but you're not getting paid for it.
Right.
But that then means you're paying the registration fee, the mileage is on your own. And. If there happened to be lodging or whatever. We touched it, but we.
Yeah, that's why I tried to put the travel expense stuff. And remove that from this a little bit.
Sure.
To say this is covered under how the, the organization itself and the policies used.
But if this board isn't going to acknowledge that you can get paid for the meeting. Why would they pay the registration fee for you to go to it and the accommodations and the mileage?
Good question.
And take it out. So, I mean, like, just leave it alone, right? Isn't it maxed out at eight, and then somebody said that?
No.
What does it say?
This, this is, in fact, I didn't correct the word meeting here. This isn't just for education, I don't believe. It says if I attend a meeting that does not qualify. So let's say.
We want to do another township meeting.
So for instance.
Yeah, but not as a board one. There was something else going on that I would consider as supervisor duties. But there might be a meeting where you need to meet with.
Let's do it some, oops, may I?
Yeah, sure.
You can probably attend a dozen MTA training sessions, in person, virtually, whatever. I think what you're trying to get to is. Is there a limit on how many of those things I could attend? With the township paying the registration and all that. Outside of this meeting pay policy.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be clear on what our policy is.
Right. And we've been looking at this, well, we don't count, but. When we started looking at this administratively. In our mind, what it was telling us is that the board of trustees are limited to eight. Conferences, whatever, and. Per year. End of story.
So then that'd be accurate. Kind of, you hit nine, it's all on your own.
Registration, travel, the whole bit, unless you get pre-approval.
Unless this board approves you to do that.
That's fair. Yeah, and I, I took this section more than just education, though. Right? I mean, there is a possibility that. Something comes up that. I feel that's important for the township to go to, that's not listed here. And you may ask the board to go, I think this is worth having representation there. We give me approval to go, right? Secondly. Maybe it comes up between board meetings, so I don't have a chance to get pre-approval for that. You can always ask for approval later to say, hey, I attended this, and this is why, and here's a report on that. I put it in the packet for compensation, either approve it or not, right? So to me, this wasn't just about education. It includes that, though.
Yeah, I agree. And so looking at, say, one of the board members was interested in doing Township Governance Academy. That's a seventy credit program. It's going to start taking you beyond what we're putting down as limits. So I'm trying to look at, as someone suggested before. You really might be creating a rabbit hole here. That we'll do things that could more or less create ill will. As opposed to the intent of this policy. Of making sure we are educated, so we have the skill. The execution and the knowledge to run this township. So just trying to understand.
And that's where the pre-approval comes in, and the transparency, and if somebody. At least you go through that academy, or you decide you want to. That's not something you just decide today and start Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
You know, you'd be planning for it. You'd say, hey, I want to do this. Want to get pre-approval. All good. And that's probably on top of this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would hope the board would look at it as explained.
I, I would think so, too. And I view the, the eight limit on, on the education as it falls into this, as. As you stated. There are educational opportunities that are very important in the board as a whole. And I go, yeah, yeah, go to that. You've hit your eight this year, but it's important that you, for some of us to learn that stuff.
Because the other thing.
It just allows us to oversee it.
Yes. And as Tim said, that why would this person go to that? Why would a board member here go to this when it may not, in their mind, pertain to what a trustee does? But. Anybody sitting at this table should have a pretty darn good understanding of all facets of township operations.
Yeah, I mean, board review is a good example of that. You've been through board review, I think you've been through it, I've been through it. Did you go? It's a useful class for any of us. Even though you don't sit in the board review, you get a better understanding of how we do assessments of our properties. And how that all works. So one, it would help you as a resident, but two, it allows you to communicate with the ownership. When they have questions about things, you can help guide them. On how to.
Also in your oversight responsibilities that the board has over the board review.
Right, yeah.
I, I think that's, that, that board review is a perfect example. That's a, that's a really good meeting. That every one of us could get something out of, because I've had, even though I was on it. Since I've not been on it, I've had people just come up and ask me, had no idea I was on the board review. Asked me questions, and I have something to say. And I, you know, it's like, okay, you can go before the board, and this is what you need to do, be prepared. This is how, you know, don't, don't, don't just go in and sit down and not have your form filled out. Here's maybe some questions to ask, some information that you need to have, so.
Yeah, so I guess the, thank you. The, the core here is, do we need to make changes here? Are you suggesting change? I'm, I'm suggesting.
In regards to what?
The three point ten, point three, point one, twelve, point twelve. It's the last paragraph, right? This is what you're referring to? I, I'm going to make.
Yeah, I was just looking for clarification on.
Okay, I'm going to make one change, if that's okay. Meeting, instead of just meeting, meeting slash event, so it's broader again. I missed that one.
I, I got a.
Sure.
A question. I'm on the planning commission. Mr. Nanny has a lot of wonderful things that I should probably attend. As a planning commissioner. Does that count towards my eight?
Good question. Because, yeah, you get, you'll get compensated through the planning commission process, like any other planning commissioner would. They get trained.
I don't think you do.
I mean. I mean, I would.
Say that again.
So as a planning commissioner, I've, I, I think one of the first years I was a planning commissioner, I went to a training in Grand Rapids. And the township took care of it. It was just a one-day thing, drove down, drove back, that was it. I, I don't believe I turned any meeting pay. I didn't, I don't think I did.
I didn't either for mine. I just turned in the mileage.
Yeah, I might, I might have done mileage or something like that, but, you know, the, the meal was provided, so that, that was the end of it. So if I tend. I'm retired, or whatever. I attend four planning commission meetings.
Training.
One every quarter, trainings, every quarter. And I attend seven meetings as a board of trustees. That's more than eight. So is me, me being a planning commissioner, attending, attending conferences for planning commission, is that. Different than a board trustee? It's, it's a loaded question. It's probably will never happen, but. Somebody else who, you know, eventually somebody else will be part of the planning commission. Maybe they'll, they'll go to tons of planning commission conferences. And a whole bunch as a board trustee for other things.
Here's the way I interpret it, and I think it's covered by the one paragraph that I add, put in that says. Like, and I use planning commission and board review as an example. That you're not compensated through this policy, and that you're compensated as a planning commissioner. And however the planning commission does, all of that is how you, you're dealt with.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean like compensation, like meeting pay. I meant like after I attend eight.
I, I, I view that as separate, is what I'm trying to say.
It was separate, okay.
Per, per that portion of the. Of the poli, proposed policy. They kind of try to separate that out if there's.
I mean, unfortunately, I'm not in a position to, to attend those many, that many conferences, but if I was. There's plenty out there that are worthwhile to, to, to go to, to do exactly what trustee Lannan said is. Make you well informed. I mean, I like, I like the eight, and I have no issue with somebody coming forward requesting, hey, I want to attend this, and this is why. And having the board of trustees say, yeah, that would be great. Thank you for going, and because you're going, we should.
Right.
See, James, along that line that you're thinking, it also crossed my mind. Now, how does this impact department heads that sit at this table? I would not want to see. Things that go on specifically with a department head treasurer going to meetings and things that. Are important for her as a department head. Impact. The eight that this board is counting. So. I mean, if you can justify, as a treasurer. As a department head, I need to go to this meeting for my department. More so than I need to go to it as a board member. And how do you balance? Those sort of things. Short answer being. We're putting rules and regulations in here. You almost need to have a scorecard of sorts, because you're kind of given cartwatch to somebody, update meetings. And then after that, you need more justification, if you're looking at compensation. And.
I mean, you go ahead. I don't want to get. We're getting into, a certain amount of trust is. Is anticipated, expected. You know. If you all start seeing that one of you is going to fifteen event meetings a year. You know, you have an opportunity to talk about it at the board level. You know, if. If, on the other hand, we're trying to develop a policy that is attempting to. Cover every situation that we can sort of imagine. Then we're going to have a whole book on just this. And that's not, I don't think, what you're wanting either.
No, absolutely.
You know, you, it's been mentioned here a couple of times, well-informed, educated. That's less than expert. You know? Want to be an expert in something, you know, get a degree, or, you know, but. You know, it's that kind of. We're, we're working off the assumption that we're not going to intentionally, you are not going to intentionally abuse it.
Right.
There's enough wiggle room, and, and, you know, this is an item that probably every four years the board ought to go through to make sure you're all on the same page. So this is a good exercise, because you've got three years ahead of you to have to work it.
My effort, I think it's great we're doing this, and however it lands is okay, but if there's anything vague. That we can sit at today and think about, there's going to be things in the future that come up and we're going to scratch our heads.
That, that's why we're going to police ourselves, though, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
We will look at what's in the packet. I mean, I always did anyways. I'm like, oh, went to this, went to that. History on this is maybe helpful. This was originally, this policy was originally put in place to avoid abuse. Of, of a similar policy that was basically that first paragraph that says you'll be compensated for extra meetings. Right? And I think part of the intent at the time, and that's where this one, one paragraph on education comes from, as well as many others. Was to allow the board to provide oversight of this compensation policy. And have some control over it. And I think the eight, it's, it's just a random number.
Seems adequate.
What's that?
It seems adequate.
Adequate, and we have every, as you said, wiggle room to allow extra stuff as needed. Or appoint two additional liaison roles, or whatever it is. I mean, this is guardrails for ourselves.
I agree that eight is very adequate. And I think the perception is. Probably that I go to more things than some of y'all. But I think I, so far in this year, have gone to two things that won't qualify. Because when you look at the numbers of the things you can go to, and if you're active in attending. For me, it could be twelve Isabella County MTA slash council governments. It could be twenty-four Isabella County meetings.
We didn't put limits on those, though.
No, I know.
Right.
It could be being asked to substitute for somebody who can't make a meeting. So, I mean, just in the raw numbers of what you can go to. It, it is a lot of things that are available to us. Just as it sits. And so it may look like, you know, gosh, they go to a lot of things, but it's been approved. And so when you get into those eight additional things, especially a big one being a conference, and you're talking four days for this. Or there's several two-day things, and the MTA puts leadership things out for supervisors and trustees. And secretaries that are coming up, you know, in October. And just a lot of good classes. Eight is a very substantial number. I, I agree with it. But. Your numbers overall, at the end of the year, could be a lot of meetings.
Yeah, and I guess that's what we'll police, right? If we have an issue, then we'll discuss it.
Yep.
All right, so in addition to when the motion was made, because we have a motion on the floor. Made three changes, just, just so. Isabella County, Isabella County Commission regular meetings, instead of not listing commission. I think that was one of them. And then Isabella.
County Road Commission.
County Road Commission, instead of just Road Commission. And then in the very last paragraph, instead of just meeting, meeting slash events, that broader terminology. I think those are the only changes we made during this debate phase.
And council of government. As opposed to council of governments.
Thank you. Yep, and I have that in here. So with that, Kurt Cody, you made the motion. Do you still support the motion?
Yeah.
With those changes, and the support came. Good?
Yes.
All right. More debate?
No.
So we call the question?
Yes.
Yes.
So anybody not clear on what we're doing here?
No, I'd just like to thank the management team for taking time to go through this and lay out a draft for us to look at.
Not, not as easy as it looks. It didn't take that much time, but, yeah. I mean, we had similar debates, maybe not at the same level, but. So the motion on the floor, if we approve this, then I'll make the changes, bring it back. If you see anything that doesn't seem right. We'll go back at it, but otherwise, it'll be what I bring, the edits. we'll go back at it, but otherwise it'll be what I bring, the edits we talked about. Okay, all in favor of approving the motion to modify policy, uh, three point ten, cost of governance for the document in front of us with the few changes we've discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
So you'll just bring, uh, provide me a final word doc, clean word document for me to insert?
Yep.
We don't need to come back?
You should not need to come back unless you all see a mistake that I made.
With the changes.
Yep.
I want to put this away so I don't lose it.
Okay, thank you all for going through that. And I'm hoping that makes it easier on our organization, too, that, um, they don't have to worry about being the police on this, they just follow the board approvals or denials on this kind of stuff. Excuse me, so that brings us to item B on our new business. Bud Street right-of-way discuss, discussion, and I'm actually looking forward to this, and you've got a lot on your plate tonight, Director Nanny.
So thank you. This is, uh, this is intended to, to update the board on the status of our Bud Street project. As you know, we've been trying for, for some time now to construct a new sidewalk along the east side of Bud Street, going north from Picker Road up to Jameson Park. And we've had some interesting struggles, which we'll walk through and try to help, uh, the board understand. If we go to the next slide. So this is our, our playground that we're working in here. You see Jameson Park's in the upper right-hand corner. Bud Street, uh, is an interesting street. It really has three parts. Up at the top of the slide there, the, the, the northern part of Bud Street, that section that goes east-west, from Isabelle Road going east to, uh, to Jameson Park, that is a platted subdivision street. Those houses, those lots in the south side were a small subdivision plat, created many, many years ago. This section of Bud Street has a very narrow right-of-way, it's less than forty feet wide. Normal road right-of-way is usually sixty-six. Uh, this one's very narrow. And, but it's a platted street, so it's, it's separate from the lots and set aside, dedicated to the public use. You can see just north of that, at the top of the slide, you see the note there for the future Thrive Church, Community Church site. As I mentioned earlier, Thrive Community Church did receive final site plan approval. As part of that, for our sidewalk ordinance, they are going to be installing a sidewalk along what would be there, the north side of Bud Street, across the front of their property. That will be installed out of the right-of-way, about ten feet out of the right-of-way, because that right-of-way is so narrow. In a separate easement, and that will go across the Bud Street frontage of the property and connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Jameson Park. So that, that blue section there is that platted subdivision street. The next section is the, is the purple section that, that's, uh, the road which crosses in front of Jameson Park. If you've enjoyed our, our banners out here, our history display, you, you know, you know the park was, was created, there was a private recreation facility. Group nineteen forty-six came together to create, create that. They bought the land. They, by nineteen forty-eight, they had built the, the ball field, actually had lights on it. And by nineteen fifty, they were constructing the, the older half of what is now Jameson Hall. And at some point, I don't know exactly when the road was put through, but the road was built, was constructed across the, the western side of Jameson Park there. It is presumably some sort of an easement, but it actually is essentially on the Jameson Park property there. And then the, the last section, the southern section, which is the one section that's in the cir, in the circle there. This section is the section we'd be really focused on tonight. The, uh, this is the section where we proposed in the sidewalk. This, this one is an interesting creature, because it is both a, a platted subdivision street and an unplatted easement, uh, street. The, uh, the lots on the, on the east side there, you'll see the, the one house that's there, the, that's kind of colored in yellow. And the lots to the south of that are, are subdivision plats, another small one. And so there's a, a, a platted right-of-way next to that. There's a label on all the, the surveys of sixty-six feet. And then on the west side, where, where the McLaren Health Center is, that side, those that went on that side, the, the road runs through a sixty-six foot wide easement that is actually over top of those properties. It creates an interesting scenario between the two. So I said, uh, actually, just go ahead and go to the next slide. This slide shows the sidewalk. This is a, a clip from, from the twenty-twenty-five survey that Gordy Fraser Associates did for us. And you can see there, a few things went on. You can see the sidewalk as, as the line going north and it, it curves around the existing home. The reason it curves around there is actually that the road right-of-way for Bud Street, that, that Gordy Fraser found, goes up to within a couple of feet of the front of that house. Most of their front yard is actually a road right-of-way. But as we, as we designed this sidewalk, we, there's no need to run the sidewalk right up to their, uh, front of their house, and, and there are also some trees and other things there, and so to go around the house, we cheated that out closer to the road in that space. You'll see the hashed lines, uh, that are on that drawing. Those are intended to call out the right-of-way that Gordy Fraser Associates surveyor found. And it's an interesting one. I said normally a road right-of-way typically sixty-six feet wide. That allows less space for the road, utilities, sidewalks, and, and other things that are under road margin. In this case, due to a very long ago survey error, that, it's nothing to do with the plating, but do, these elements here, they're, the, essentially what appears to be is two surveys met here, two different surveyors coming from the east and from the west, met here, and they, they had a gap. And that gap is reflected actually in this road right-of-way, which varies in width. At the south end, it's actually eighty feet wide, where it meets the Picker Road right-of-way. At the north end, it, it expands out and it's ninety-nine feet wide. And what we have here is actually two road rights-of-way. One, one at easement on the properties to, from, on the west side, and the other, a platted, uh, right-of-way of the platted lots of the east that overlap, but they don't overlap perfectly. They're not right on top of one another. They sort of overlap with a little bit of, partially overlap, you might say. That's, that creates this, this irregular shape. So, uh, the, uh, this section sidewalk, I'll, I'll go, go throughout a little, this is simply to get the sidewalk constructed. And we were very happy, actually, to have plenty of road right-of-way here. We looked at this, this plan, and I was our engineer for working on the plans for this. This is one of the few cases where we have plenty of right-of-way to work with. And we felt it was going to be a very simple thing to get a right-of-way permit from the road commission to put the sidewalk in. So the plans that, that were given to the road commission, it essentially looked like this, there was more construction plans, but it, it looked like this. It marked the right-of-way as you see it here, uh, and, uh, we, we submitted those plans to the road commission and asked for their permission, because we need their permission to, to put this improvement in the right-of-way, expecting we have a very simple procedure. And, and instead, uh, the permit was denied. And so we'll talk a little bit about, uh, the reason why. In fact, I'm going to the next slide, let's, let's show them. We asked why, and what, what we learned was that the road commission did not, uh, recognize that entire right-of-way width, the hashed area you saw on the last slide. What they recognized was essentially the, the right-of-way on the lots from the west, the sixty-six foot wide right-of-way, uh, that's, uh, that, the, the, throughout the sketch on the left-hand side there, that dark shaded area, although there are no dimensions on that sketch, this was a, this was provided to us from the road commission as part of their, their explanation. That, that, the dark shaded areas tend to be sixty-six feet wide, uh, and goes north to Picker Road, and then makes a jog to the right, and then continues on across the, the park property. So they, they essentially recognized that, that sixty-six foot wide right-of-way on the west side. They don't recognize the platted area to the east. And most of our sidewalk was in that platted right-of-way to the east side. So the, uh, this sketch, uh, you see there's marked from twenty, twenty thirteen. Our cert, our, our engineers looked at this, the surveyor looked at it. They noted that there are no survey markers on it, there are no dimensions on it. It is truly simply a sketch. Uh, it is not something that has any, any certification or any, any, uh, consistency with a certified survey document drawn.
It does say sketch on it, too.
It does indeed. So, uh, with that, uh, we, we went back, our engineers go back, and put together a revised drawing that reflected what the road commission feedback was, which, which was essentially that only a small portion of our proposed sidewalk was in the right-of-way they recognized. And that's the area you see highlighted in the right-hand sketch, uh, right-hand drawing. This is part of our, our, uh, construction plans. The, and the revised plans that we, we submitted for a, a, a revised permit application. You see the yellow highlighted that's in front of the existing home, and you see that small section of blue highlighted area for the north end, where it connects up to Jameson Park sidewalk. Those are the only areas that the road commission said were within the right-of-way. So we submitted an updated application and asked for a permit to do those that work within their right-of-way, with the understanding that the rest of, of the area was not under their jurisdiction as they saw it. So we developed that point, since it is part of a dedicated right-of-way, that we could construct our sidewalk within that space. It was not private property. It's, it's, so these lots on these sides are platted lots, where they, they dedicate the right-of-way to the public, not even on their land. We submitted that revised, uh, drawing, that the road commission did grant a permit for those two highlighted areas, but they granted it conditionally. They granted with a stipulation that, uh, that we, the township, provide the road commission with, uh, proof of permission to locate the rest of our sidewalk on what they consider to be private property. And we were required to put, provide that information to the road commissions of, for their review. So, uh, at this point, we, we, we have a contract, I haven't even mentioned this yet, but we have a contractor, we've had a contractor for quite some time, Malle Construction. Malle Construction, uh, we, we, we talked to Malle Construction about where we were, and they were involved in this permitting process. And, and their, uh, direction was, they were not comfortable proceeding with the construction of the sidewalk until they had a permit from the road commission for the whole thing, uh, or until essentially what the road commission asked for, which was, we could prove that we had permission to be there. So we were, it's, it creates a very much a catch-twenty-two situation, because it is the road commission itself that essentially is the owner of that, the, the platted right-of-way on the east side of Bud Street. And, and not the, the property owners, the old land further to the east.
But that's according to our, our survey, correct?
That is according to our survey.
Yeah.
Uh, as, as you saw in that first slide, uh, he did certify, he put his seal on it, he signed it, dated it. And he did that, uh, because he found multiple markers. In addition to all the markers in the field, that showed markers where the right-of-way edges were. In addition to that, he pulled, uh, all of the recorded documents from the county registered deeds office for all the properties around the entire perimeter of Bud Street, including up there, the Thrive Church property, it went through the whole link. Uh, so we have all the recorded deeds, we have all the recorded surveys. I'll show you some of the surveys in a moment. And what we found, as, as both as the surveyor went through all the information, and as, as we went through it with staff, was that, that, that all that documentation was absolutely consistent with what our surveyor said the right-of-way was. There's no question. The only document, and it's not recorded, that says anything different is this twenty-thirteen Lappam sketch. And that's, as I said, not in the survey document. Any, any other questions to this point? There are a lot of you already, at least, there's more, actually.
This doesn't have as much to do with the sidewalk, but the, the sketch at least, they show a pretty narrow right-of-way along that north section that goes east to west?
Yes.
Is it actually, do they actually, and that's why you said the Thrive Church was looking at building the sidewalk outside of the right-of-way, then?
Right. It's, yeah, there is no space within the right-of-way to build that sidewalk. So both utilities and sidewalks are outside of that right-of-way. As I said, it's less than forty feet wide instead of the normal sixty-six, and it's just how it was platted. I, I suspect, like, there's not, no documentation of it, but I suspect what may have been intended was essentially they were plating half the right-of-way, with the idea that when the land in the north developed, it would platter the other half. That was relatively common back in the day, talking about eighty or ninety years ago, where, where you would see a subdivision plat that had half a right-of-way along the, along the border, and the idea was the other half would be built later. Fortunately, that doesn't always happen, and it didn't happen in this case, so we just have the half of it.
Thank you.
Question. Do you have any per se concerns about, uh, the sidewalk and utilities being on private property? Does that create a problem?
Well, it's not on private property. That's the key here, is that this proposed sidewalk is within, uh, a dedicated road right-of-way for Bud Street. It's simply not an area that, that the road commission.
The, the east-west sidewalk on the.
Oh, that, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, for, for Thrive Church? No, it will be within its own easement. Uh, the utilities are within their own easement. And the sidewalk is, uh, our sidewalk and pathway ordinance requires developers, when they put in sidewalks outside of the right-of-way, that they provide an easement that's recorded on the property and provided to the township for that sidewalk. It will be a public sidewalk.
Thanks.
Uh, I, I, a slide to the right, I guess the last thing I'll note, it's kind of, it's somewhat hard to see. See the, what the road commission calls a right-of-way, that's in the very thin red dotted lines that go along there. So you can see how the side, our, our proposed sidewalk is mostly outside of it, that space. Y'all see that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
So where, where we are right now is, uh, we have a difference of opinion with the road commission as to, as to what right-of-way they control. And, uh, we have, uh, our contractor, respectfully, I, I respect this choice, does not want to construct this without being absolutely certain that he's constructing it in a place where the sidewalk is allowed to be. We don't want to construct a sidewalk in a place where, where there's any doubt about that either. Uh, we have, our surveyor shows it's in the right spot. There are multiple documents that show it's in the right spot. But we want to make sure the road commission is on the front of stage, uh, with the road commission for this as well. Uh, if we go to the next slide? So as I said, we have multiple documents the surveyor pulled. It is due diligence from, from the registered deeds office. Three, these are just three of the, the older certified surveys. Again, you can see the, the seal of the surveyor on each one of these. We have from nineteen seventy-five, nineteen eighty-six, and two thousand sixteen. The, uh, the one in the center shows the, what's now the McLaren Health Center lot. So that's, that's, shows the land on the west side of the road. And you can see there that there's a right-of-way on the east side that's labeled Bud Street. Look further into it, and you, if you see very small print, you'll see the sixty-six feet noted there. The other two, uh, drawings from nineteen seventy-five and two thousand sixteen, both are referring to the, the planted land on the east side of the road. And in both cases there, again, you can see notations of a, of a road right-of-way. Notation on, uh, the nineteen seventy-five survey notes the sixty-six feet width to the east of those lots. The Lappam survey, now this is what a Lappam certified survey looks like in this twenty-sixteen document. Uh, also shows it, again, labeled as the road, with the width labeled, uh, on that, that location where we'd like to put our sidewalk. This is the eastern half of that, that odd-shaped right-of-way. So we have, we, we have three certified, certified surveys that all speak differently to what, to what the road commission says, one of which is from the same company that they're relying on for their sketch.
Why would the road commission not take one that Lappam had already done? Maybe I shouldn't be asking you, you don't understand that answer either, but, right? It doesn't make sense to me, instead of a sketch even.
No, it, it is, it is definitely a challenge there, but I, uh, not, not a clear answer as to why, but we'll talk a little bit more about that, because there's still a bit more to that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about, about these drawings? All right, next slide. So as I said, I, I explained where we are at this point. This is the full survey drawing from, from Gordy Fraser, from, from, uh, February this year. The, uh, we, we have asked again, uh, the road commission to look at this, this issue, and, uh, The, we have asked again the road commission to look at this issue, and we just recently shared again this documentation with them, including those older surveys and Gordy Fraser's survey. And Mr. Costelli, the head of the road commission, has indicated that he is looking at this issue again. He's consulting with the road commission attorney and others to consider this issue again. The key for us is, what we ask the road commission to do, is to accept the shaded area as their right-of-way. It truly is their right-of-way, it just happens to be oddly shaped because of this old, very ancient survey error that coincides with Bud Street. But it is all their right-of-way, simply two 66-foot right-of-way that overlap. And, so we're asking them to accept it and then grant us a permit for that sidewalk, so we can simply construct that sidewalk as proposed along the east side of the road all the way north to the park. Or if they're not comfortable with simply accepting Gordy Fraser's work and that certification, we ask them to consider hiring another surveyor to go out and verify this work and give them direction back from their own surveyor for this information. Our goal is to simply construct the sidewalk, we'd like to do it soon. We've been waiting a while, quite a while, the markers were all up for it, marked the path again, but we'll simply get this connection done, so we have the connection up to the park. And this, along with what the Thrive Community Church is required to construct, would complete this loop all the way over to this road and allow much improved pedestrian access to our park. With that, I have to answer a question.
So it's conceivable that, for whatever reason, the road commission could drag their feet on this and keep us from constructing the sidewalk for some time without maybe some other action taken?
The road commission, they have authority over the road right-of-way. And they have every right to decide what can be within that right-of-way. There are some guidelines, and sidewalks obviously are a common thing in the road right-of-way. But yes, we do need their approval to be able to construct the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
I had to step out briefly. You did mention the EDA approved the monies last year, I think the engineering was done last year, the markers were put down, not the markers, but it was all flagged off last year, right?
That's right, yeah. This is an East EDA district project, and so the EDA board funded it, they put it out for bids, and they approved the contractor, Malle Construction. And yes, we were to the point, everything was marked, the route was marked, and we were ready to go, since we had the permit from the road commission.
And may I?
Please, yeah.
You may be wondering why we're bringing this to you to begin with, you know, we don't bring all these little problems to you. But we've been working with the administration of the road commission, and we've been working with them for a fair amount of time. More recently, I became personally involved, working with the road commission administrator, and I've asked him for help on a couple things in this more recent interaction. And so I'm hopeful that we're going to end up where we need to be. But because of this location, we have Jameson Park that we've put a lot of money into in the last ten years. It's a really nice park. We have Thrive Church going in to the north of it. We can envision the activity in this area of the township increasing. And so we need to have a way to allow our citizens to utilize this nice park that we're putting a bunch of money into, that has sort of been out there all along. And, and so it's a, even, I don't know how long the sidewalk is.
I don't call it a cliff straight up in.
Thousand feet or something?
Eleven, hundred and twelve hundred feet.
Yeah, you know, I'll say, I just want an 11,000-foot long sidewalk connecting Pickard to the park, you know, for the people that work and live in that area and that want to visit that area. And so, in addition to continuing to work it at the administrative level, I thought it prudent that, we're not asking you to do anything, we're just wanting to make you aware of where we're at. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get where we need to be. But then we'll see what happens next. Maybe somebody's decision, maybe mine, that, you know, we'll find another construction company that doesn't need that condition they have. We have a road right-of-way, and we'll just build it, and then I'll ask them for permission. You know, I don't know why, but that's an extreme, but we just want a sidewalk. And so we've been working with the road commission staff to get permitted. We're running into some challenges. The more we looked into it, it was a unique setup, so I get, I get it that it wasn't just maybe provided as quickly as some of the other permits. And as we dug into it, you know, we just weren't making as much progress as I wanted to. So I talked to Tony, we briefed you, see what happens next.
I'm sure the citizens would like having a sidewalk to the park for all to use.
I'm ready to fight for it, for the citizens, whatever we need to do. From this chair anyways, that's just coming from me. I'm on board of what we need to do to get the sidewalk put in.
We put in a sidewalk in front of Jameson on our property. Thrive Church is going to have one going east and west coming into it, and then what's going to dead-end at the driveway into Jameson Park, and that goes south to the other sidewalk on Pickard.
Seems like we're all trying to fight for these bike paths and sidewalks. Can't believe we have resistance. It's unwarranted.
Yeah. I want to thank you for all your work, because being on the EDA, I remember when this began, and your continual updates to the EDA board, as issues you were running into, it's like, why did this begin? Well, we got some problems. So I know this has been a lot for you to deal with, and then now our manager jumping in as well. Yeah, anyways, thanks.
It has been unique. We really thought this was going to be an easy one, very simple, they played it right away, and it just has not proven simple. So hopefully it does get resolved, and hopefully the Gordy Fraser survey will be accepted and we can get a permit and get moving.
Thank you.
Good.
Good work, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That takes us to new business, item C, policy governance 2.5.10, cash flow ratio. Mr. Stuhl dryer, this is yours to introduce, if you would.
Thank you. This is an annual report due in June, 2.5.10. There's a report that begins on page 23 of your agenda packet, the policy wording for 2.5.10, "The township shall not fail to maintain adequate, an adequate level of cash flow." And that's all the policy says. My interpretation of that is that, in the main, that we need available cash for cash flow needs, typical cash flow needs, within each of our funds. And then on top of that, in other sections of the policy, specifically 2.4.3, it talks about the levels of, the amount of cash flow that we're to have for each of these funds. And so in the general fund, it's, the policy states four months of budget expenditures we should have as free cash, fire fund, three of the four quarterly payments to the city for the fire contract, east and west EDA funds, it's two months of operating expenses of free cash available, and water and sewer, it's two months. The justification, first, we want to make sure we're defining cash flow for this report. It's liquid cash reserves, we hold those in bank, checking accounts, CDs, anything that we can access pretty much on a day's notice is what we defined as liquid cash reserves. The four months for the general fund is because we don't collect our revenues evenly throughout the year. Our tax collections come at the end of our fiscal year, and so we need cash at the front. We're also getting other types of revenue throughout the year, we're not only relying on property taxes. So four months is deemed adequate. For the fire fund, the, again, our tax collections don't come till December, but we have three quarterly payments prior to that, so that's where that definition comes from. And the east and west, they're a little more simple, it's project, it's ongoing expenses that are not big project orientated. We fund those with the fund balances in the east and west EDA, but we do need a certain amount of cash available for our normal expenses, the ban or programs, the street lights along Pickard, those kinds of things. And then the utility fund, two months of cash flow. We do quarterly billing, bills are sent out in January, April, July, and October. So with that, large chunks of revenue coming in, fairly certain we only need two months of, in our mind, free cash. The data that you have here, we have the funds that are in question, general, fire, east-west, sewer, water, current cash position in the left column of dollar amounts, the required for compliance number in the middle, and then yes or no on the far right. You see that they're all yes, and so therefore I believe that the administration is in compliance with policy 2.5.10.
I would say so. Nothing like being a high achiever.
Anybody feel that the organization's not in compliance on this?
Not at all.
I did have a question, it's semi-unrelated, maybe I should save it for another time. I'll save it for another time. You good? That brings us to item D of new business, policy governance 2.7, ends of focus of grants.
And we have a report there that begins on page 25. This is an annual review in June. The policy wording, "The township manager may not enter into any grants or contract arrangements that fail to emphasize primarily the production of ends and secondarily the avoidance of unacceptable means. Further, without limiting the foregoing, the manager shall not submit a grant application to the tribal 2% program without prior approval by the board of trustees." My interpretation of that is that, as was mentioned earlier in a discussion, really all that we're doing is trying to effectuate the ends, and that's what this policy is kind of reiterating, doubling down on, particularly in the area of grant and contractual arrangements. So all our grant applications, contractual arrangements, we need to be focused on, are they contributing to achieving the ends as outlined in policy 1.0 to 1.5? And I believe that's justified, that that interpretation is justified basically because of the wording of the policy itself. Data that I have presented here, I'll just cover a little bit of it annually, you're all used to seeing the participation agreements, that's a form of contract that we do sometimes with the EDA, between the township and the EDA, sometimes between the township and the road commission as it relates to roads. Those are all consistent with our ends, and I've indicated the specific end that it's related to in this data, so if you want to tie it back, you're able to. We have applied for reimbursements from the state, these are grants for fire protection for state-owned property within the township, $10,200 there came our way. Similar concept, the state has reduced the tax burden on small, medium-sized businesses in the form of personal property tax relief. They have tried to backfill that a little bit to the local governments, because we were losing revenue in the school districts and libraries and everybody else. So they set aside some money that if we do what is available to us and that we're, that we have a right to do, apply for it. We do and did, $95,000 returned, and that was allocated, and I don't know the exact allocation, but between the east-west, general and the fire funds. We did apply for $125,000 in the spring of '24 at the 2% level, and that helped improve and pay for the Lincoln Road, south of Broomfield project. We applied in the fall of 2024, $250,000, which was awarded, and that is helping to fund the Water Main Extension Loop Project up in the northeast corner of the township, Somerton Road, that area. I did want to mention the ARPA funds, although that grant is several years old, we can only, from an accounting perspective, recognize what was spent in any given year. So in FY '24, we recognized $393,000 of the ARPA funds, this is separate from the water and sewer grant. We were awarded $1.4 million a couple years ago, and some of that has been spent in prior years, and then we recognized these amounts for these particular projects in this table. And then we also, there's a program at the state level that helps reimburse townships for election-related expenses, and clerk applied for what was available there. We were awarded $20,660, and I believe that was for the various 2024 elections. So in the administration's opinion, again, we're in compliance with this policy 2.7. And be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
I'm going to have something for you, but it's later through our, what we do.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you were going to do that between the last one and this one, or, yeah, okay.
So I'll come back to you.
Okay.
So this was due in June, of course, so on time, right?
Yep.
You all read through the interpretation, any issues there, feel anything's not justified?
Good.
Or proved?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you feel the interpretation addresses all aspects of the policy?
Yes.
And manager's interpretation is that we're in compliance, does anybody disagree with that? Anything in the policy you worry about that's not clearly addressed?
No.
Okay, here's the thing I had, and it's more of just a question. And I kind of don't know the answer, but I want to know how you would handle this. So the way the policy is written is that, "You shall not enter into any grants or contracts that fail to emphasize essentially the ends," right? But I could see a situation where you might find something that is in the best interest of the township, maybe there's some grant money that we can go after, but from your perspective, you're not sure how to directly apply it to the ends. My assumption in that case is that you would come to the board then and say, I want to go- My assumption in that case is that you would come to the board then and say, "I want to go after this." Or how would you handle that? Does my question make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. Makes perfect sense. If I thought it was important for the township, I would probably be able to make the connection to the ends through wording. And if I couldn't do that, then I would come to the board. Although, I might also just not apply for it.
Because, and that's the reason for my question. I wouldn't want to discourage, if there's an opportunity where we don't have to put a lot of skin in the game, but it's a benefit to the township. I don't want to discourage that pursuit.
Right. And that's where I'm pretty certain that I can tie it to the ends. There are, and if I, I can probably think of something, but there is a ton of grant money out there. And everybody always talks about grant money, and it's free money, and that's good, and, you know, get grant writers and all this stuff. Well, it's not just about the money sometimes, you know? We're looking at a thing here, it's not a ton of money, but we're really struggling with the sidewalk. And, you know, grant money to start up an electric utility, for instance, in the township. I don't know that I'd even bring that to you. And I would love to hear something from somebody that could give me an example where you think we should apply, but we're not sure, just off the top of your head. And I got the policy right behind me, and I bet you I can connect it to something. Roads, public safety, parks, utility, you know, basic, basic local government services. And it might come in, you know, in, on the margins of a project, maybe. Might be an example, the fitness center in McDonnell Park. There were two grants involved there. One was the build of the facility. Another grant piece had to do with the mural that's facing Pickard. We could have done that project without the mural. And arguably, you know, does that mural fit exactly in with one of those ends? I might have trouble, you know, although, no, I wouldn't because there's something in the end that's about welcoming everybody. And the way that mural is designed is to speak to directly that. So, there might be some things on the margin of a project where you have a lot of grant that, but if it's at the margins, it's already connected to something bigger.
I only asked the question because I want to make sure you didn't feel that would limit you largely in any?
No, and I'm only answering it because, and the way I am is because I don't want you all to feel that we'd be passing up money that we could use. Our challenge is, we see it with the drinking water grant. Our challenge is sometimes spending the money within the timeframe limitations of the grant because of staffing and things like that.
Because if we were having to turn away free money, I might put in our ends, accept all free money.
Yeah, right. And then, I might hire two project managers.
Well, thank you. I just really wanted to make sure that it wasn't limiting you from your perspective. Okay, are we good?
So, first of all, there's an old, old saying, nothing's free. And there's probably a good reason for that. But just a second question, piggybacking on what the discussion was. Mark sees a grant, he goes out and applies for it. We receive it. There's no requirement to accept grants that you are approved to receive, I don't imagine. No. So, being proactive and going after a grant you think might be a really good thing. And decline them, that's okay, you know?
Right.
You determine it's not a grant that meets our needs.
Yep.
Yeah, and maybe my, that might be a good point on my interpretation, because in my interpretation, I say that township manager interprets this policy indicates that all grant applications, and that probably should say all grant approvals. Because you're exactly right, and even with the contractual, unless it's under $20,000, a grant approval, if a grant needs to be formally approved for acceptance, no matter what the money level is, it's going to come to this board. And any contract, because of other policies, have to come to this board too. And so, there's almost a double check. One, you don't want to see these things coming to you. And then, if you do, there's a checking balance there as well. I was recommending accepting a grant to put, you know, Ukrainian flag on the water tower. If you guys said no to that, I wouldn't have asked, but free money, you know, we got to put up a flag. Or any other country in the world you want to use.
Understood? We good? Trustee Landon, good?
I'm good.
All right, so that moves us to item E on our new business, policy governance 3.5, board commission and community linkage. This is on page, I'm looking here.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thank you for that. And you're back it. Very briefly, I'll just introduce this. Basically, I'm not going to read all this, but it basically says, "The board will host planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, and union township economic development authority to share ends and promote alliance within the community." It also speaks to promoting regional linkage with other government entities, county authorities, township, Indian Nation, the establishing liaisons with various groups. That's kind of a highlight of that policy. Assuming you've all read it. So, with that, I believe we are on time with this one, correct? June?
Yes.
Do you believe the board is in compliance with this policy? Let me, I always need to ask the negative of this. Anyone feel we're not in compliance? Okay? Anything we should be improving on in this, in our processes? All right. Board need to learn or discuss anything regarding this policy? You have any additions or changes? Okay, I have one. Okay, in 3.5.1, it says, "To keep the board fully informed, the planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, Chippewa River, Union Township, blah, 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 shall be invited to present to the board." Some of that is done through our annual meeting. Some of it is, for example, with Mid-Michigan Development Corporation, we invite them here. Chippewa River District Library, we invite here. So, 3.5.3 says, "The township board will name a liaison to each of these groups to establish and maintain communication with these authorities and report back to the township board." And it's interesting that we were just going through 3.10, which is just this. And I really felt that is covered in 3.10. And it is much more detailed of what liaison roles are important to our township, to us as a board, and didn't need to be here anymore.
This one, I think this is the one like the manager stood where I goes to a couple of these. So, it's not really for the, you know, like he was?
Correct. Okay, so, but it does say, here's the other issue I had. I, thank you, I agree. Township board, because a good example is we appoint, we've appointed Mark to Mid-Michigan Development Corporation as our liaison. That's a great example. The, it says, "The township board will name a liaison to each of these groups to establish and maintain communication with these authorities." But what are those groups? And that, part of that group is the zoning board of appeals. And we have currently, our treasurer sits on the zoning board of appeals, but we've never typically made that a liaison role. And in fact, in best practice, at least what I always taught at MTA, and I'm curious about others' feelings on this. The MTA suggests not putting board members on the ZBA. Bad look. It's not illegal, right? It is illegal for one of us, one of, all of us to sit on the board of review and have a voting role. But ZBA is just a bad look because they may be in a position where they have to rule on something that this board's already ruled on. And that's why the MTA says it's not a good idea. And we did appoint last term trustee Brown for about, was it three months?
Three, four months till we got some board.
And the goal when we did that was, because we were short a seat, I think, was to get that filled as quick as possible. And as soon as we filled it, we took you off. And I'm not, I'm not trying to point out or point at our treasurer here because she was in the ZBA before she was elected to this position. So, that's not what I'm going after. It is more about, I think it would be bad practice to recommend that we assign liaisons in practice to the zoning board of appeals. I'm not saying it.
I agree.
Yeah, and I'm not saying?
Because I went to the training.
You remember it then?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And I'm not suggesting that we're making a change. They don't meet that often, and I'm assuming you would recuse yourself if you get into a situation where you're ruling on something twice, right? Which is against the, I think that's against law, I think. But I don't think that should be practice, which is what this said to me. Does that make sense? Says, "We shall," or "will," it doesn't say "shall." Says, "We will name a liaison to each of these groups." And that's planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, EDA, is what's listed in the beginning. But I think, so I was going to suggest taking this out, but I think you're right, clerk Cody, that some of our liaison appointments aren't just board. We're not necessarily appointing board members to them. We appoint our manager to some things.
I mean, we can take out the zoning board of appeals if you want. I mean, it's okay that you're still on it while the term is going, but, you know, if we can get somebody else on, try to fill it. I didn't even think of that.
How, do you have a suggestion of how we would take it out? Because it, I think it needs to be in here. We still want them to report to us.
Oh, well, she can just go and be a non-voting member, but, I mean, if?
I just don't think we should be appointing a liaison like we do all other liaisons to that board. Except we're, not as a permanent practice. It's not a, we have to point a liaison to it.
Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Would you put, the township board will name a, I don't know if this clarifies it, but a board member or non-board member to each of these boards?
Well, it's the each that I have a problem with. Oh. Yeah, I was trying to put in the language that per MTA best practice is that we avoid the board member on a ZBA. That's what I was trying to avoid.
We know that currently. That doesn't necessarily mean how it would be worded if we put board members or non-board member to each of these. Would know why that's there, but.
Rather than take more?
So, maybe we can bring that one back.
Yeah, rather than take more time on that, is there disagreement or on the, on the concept of what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think we should bring it back.
It actually just lays us on, Sarah covers board member.
How about if I try to draft something at our next management meeting? We could kind of work through that, bring something back. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, sure.
Anything else on this then?
Only thing I see is on 3.5.1, after zoning board of appeals, there might be a comment.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. For entertaining me on that. That brings us to item 11F, policy governance 3.6. Uh-oh. Supervisor's role in the board's process. It has to be tonight? Okay. Comes once a year, I'm always self-conscious. It's all right, the clerk and treasurer are next. Policy, board policy 3.6, supervisor's role in the board's process. The policy states, "The supervisor assures the integrity of the board's process and secondarily occasionally represents the board outside parties." And there's some more, or some additional language to that, which I assume you all have read. So, with that, anybody feel that we are not in compliance with this policy?
No.
Anything we need to improve upon process-wise?
Do you have notes already, so we can just go with that first, and then we'll?
On the last question, I have some notes. No issues with that? What do we need to learn or discuss in order to live by its policies more completely? This is where I have something, if I may. And this is, I only say this, and I think I probably say this each year, so it's in full clarity and full disclosure. Part of the policy says that the supervisor will represent board policy, right? That as supervisor or treasurer or trustee, none of us have the authority by ourselves to go out in the public domain and counter what our board policies are, what decisions we've made, right? So, I may disagree, and this has happened before, where maybe I'm the lone vote against something, but now, in public, I'm for the thing I was against, right? Because that we came to together. So, with that said, I do have conversations a lot with other elected officials, community members, but primarily, it's with other elected officials that we may be discussing projects or something. I may list my personal views a little bit at that time. And that's usually early on when they might be proposing something, and I'll say, "Oh, that's a great idea. I like that. I'll bring that to the board." But I always think, I always disclaimer and say, "But that's me." It's the board that makes the decision, right? So, I want it to just be in full disclosure that I can't stop my personal views because a lot of times I have to have that discussion and then bring it to all of us. Make sense?
I do that too. Say my personal opinion.
I think it's natural, right? And so, we all should be conscious that whether you're speaking for yourself or you're speaking for the board, right? Or the township.
For sure.
Okay, are we good? Last new business item, three-point, policy governance 3.7, duties of elected department heads. This is covering the treasurer and clerk. I'll just read the top level. Township clerk and township treasurer, serve the township in a dual capacity. In carrying out the duties within the scope of the law, these elected officials serve as elected department heads, responsible for designating department operations under the advisory supervision of the township manager. And you've all read the policy, I'm assuming. Anybody feel we're not in compliance here? Anything we need to do to improve or need to discuss? Is there any modifications we should make?
I like how it's working.
I'm the problem child. I have one suggested change.
What?
This is in 3.7.1. Near the end of that paragraph, it says clerk's responsibilities include, and it goes through some things, and then it says secretary is the township board and the zoning Board of Appeals. And I never considered the duties that you do as secretary for that. Is there, is there a statutory requirement? Do you work with...
I don't think so.
Yeah, I didn't understand why that was in there.
I'll look it up.
Manager's stool dryer, do you happen to know the law on that?
I don't.
I just, I just didn't want it...
We'll get back to you in a little bit.
Yeah, I just didn't want it in there, making that responsibility for you, if you shouldn't be having that.
Is that the letter of the law, but then also unless delegated to other?
That's what I was...
It's kind of similar to, you're in charge of assessing responsibilities unless designated or...
That's kind of my assumption, but I didn't know that, and I was curious. Because if, if it's not statutorily required, maybe it shouldn't be there.
Sure. Agreed.
Doesn't that more or less have to do with the recording of activities that need to be recorded? Based on motion or...
But the word is secretary, it's not just records management. Secretary.
We'll find out.
Yeah, that's what I said. I mean, we could all just be like, I don't know. We'll look it up.
Okay, we all good?
Sounds prudent.
Moving on. That brings us to Extended Public Comment, which is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. Note that if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And we will open Extended Public Comment at 9:27 PM. Let the record show, nobody in person in attendance.
Nobody in line.
And nobody connected remotely. And we've been here long enough, if someone was going to show up late, they could have got in here. So with that, seeing no public comment, we'll close Extended Public Comment at 9:28 PM. That takes us to item 13, Manager's Comments. Mr. Stooldryer.
Thank you, just a couple. The Township Administration, maybe the township writ large, under the leadership of the administration, is going to conduct our third annual Care Store Drive. We, Amy, I don't say we, Tara and Amy, lead this effort. We do a program during the month of July where we're, we'll do a press release, we'll have some flyers and boxes out in front where we're collecting goods on behalf of the Care Store. And then at the end of that, we'll take them down, usually in the back of a pickup truck, get a little PR, a little bit of press for it. So we'll be doing that in the month of July. And then I also, although I sent out an email on this, I do like to publicly announce these things as well. Mr. Josh Waldron has been promoted to Public Works Foreman, and we need to change that word. But that's the position currently held by Mr. John Bebo, who is retiring at the end of this summer. Josh has been with us for 13 years now. And he was hired in as a skilled operator, which is basically a heavy equipment operator. And he's been performing that job very well in these 12 or 13 years. Along the way, although it wasn't required for his position as skilled operator, he obtains certain water licenses and sewer, or wastewater licenses, even though they weren't required for his job, he obtained them. He was, which shows initiative and, you know, desire for self-betterment. What it also did was position himself to be a strong applicant for this Public Works Foreman position, which does require some minimal licensing. And so, we went through the normal hiring process. We interviewed, two people applied, one was from outside, one was from inside. And we used our normal process, interview team, all this is going on over at Public Services, pretty much. And they recommended Mr. Waldron for this position. So I think that's a great look for the township, for Josh. And we had employees that we created opportunities through the CBA and the premium licensing, little bump in pay, sort of incentivized folks to get these licenses, and then they're better positioned to apply for higher paying jobs. He has been working closely with Mr. Bebo over the last year or so. So I'm just really happy to announce that, that promotion. Then the last thing is, I'm likely out of the office this Friday. Probably be taking a couple weeks, a couple days off next week. They won't be right in a row, but I'll be sort of in and out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Final board member comment. I was trying to remember where I started earlier. We'll start over here. Trustee Brown.
Just a couple things. One, I know sometimes we sit in here and we, we make these decisions and and then we forget about decisions and move on to our next, to our next decision that we make, what it may be. I guess what I'm getting at is I've really been watching, one of the things that we've done as board members, not only the past board, but this board as far as the bike lanes and walk lanes, is a six-foot bike lane that we put in from Lincoln Road heading east on Broomfield. Since I live right there, I get to watch it every day. I walk it every day. I'm on my electric bike every day. Really interested in the traffic with the six-foot bike lane, because we talked it up so much. I did not realize how valuable that decision was for the township. Today, for instance, two young ladies with babies in a cart, a jogging cart, two, two young ladies actually exercising, running down the road, separate from each other, half hour, or a half a mile apart. And then three other people up by the church. At any given time, there's three or four people using these bike lanes throughout the day. And I just wanted to bring that out, not only to the board members, but to the public, how important that these decisions with the walkways are. And I think you see me worked up a little bit today with the County Road Commission with Bud Street. And it's just that I see how much the community is benefiting from, from these non-motorized pathways. And much more than I think I did way before I became a trustee. And it's really, really opened my eyes, probably in the last three years as a trustee. And trustee Bills, should I say retired trustee Bills, really opened my eyes when she sat beside me. And we talked a lot about this, but I just wanted to bring it in. That's one thing I just really wanted to talk about. I think the, the decision that was made by the trust, by the board for that six-foot bike lane down Broomfield was a huge one. I really do. Secondly, happy Fourth of July. We're going to be enjoying that before our, our next meeting, I believe. And I just wanted to say, enjoy it, be safe. Watch firecrackers, right? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lannan?
I just want to recognize, congratulations to John Bebo for terrific career that he dedicated to the township as foreman of, you know, operations of water and wastewater. And, and congratulations to Josh on positioning himself to step in. And it's real nice that there's, you know, a significant amount of time for them to be working together and overlapping transition pretty seamlessly, so. Job well done, guys.
Trustee Theron.
Good, thank you.
Clerk Cody. Two things. I'm going to piggyback, and this wasn't in my...
You do it.
It's not in my notes before you spoke.
You do that.
So I'll do that second, though. Just briefly, I wanted to lift up a gem that I think we have in our community. So I was down in Tampa last week on business, and I happened to have a free afternoon. So I went to visit my brother-in-law, who happens to work at the Children's Museum in downtown Tampa, which was just awesome. And it's, it's massive. It's three floors. It's really something. But it really, it just reminded me how valuable the Discovery Museum here in Mount Pleasant is to our community, and actually, all, all over the place. If you go look at the map of the pins of people that have come to Discovery Museum to take their kids, it's all over the world.
Yep.
And so I, I just wanted to lift them up. They're in our own township. The fact that my daughter works there is irrelevant. But I, yeah, I'm so glad they're part of our community. And then piggybacking on you a little bit, pathways. Trustee Bills was a big advocate. I want to ask if this board would be interested in getting educated on maybe some of the history of bluegrass a little bit?
The music?
Music and maybe? And what I'm referring to is back in, back in 2011 or 12, I think, maybe it was 12, for the 12 budget, this would have been the 2013 budget. Money was approved at that time by the township for sidewalks for both sides of bluegrass from Mission to Isabella, down Isabella, that corner, to Broomfield. From Broomfield, you were part of this board, from Broomfield to connect into the city, it was full loop. And that has not come to pass because of lots of things. And it's always bothered me that we haven't been able to close some of those gaps. I know staff has put a lot of time in that. I just wondered if this board, especially for those that haven't been through some of that, if it's worth having a discussion on why it is where we are today? And if that became a higher priority from this board, what are our options moving forward?
Yes.
100%. Yes, absolutely, for me.
Can we do something in a month or two or three? That we can have that conversation?
Thank you.
And at this point, I think just education. Part, part of this comes from some conversations that our treasurer and I have had too with our manager. And I think it'd be useful for all of you to hear some of those same discussions we've had.
Yes, yep.
And with that, our business is done. And so we will end our meeting at 9:38 PM.